Good afternoon. I won't say good evening yet, but good afternoon. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will not come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Metoel?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today, and Councilman Reed is absent today. We have a quorum present, and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you created. And God, we just thank you for the opportunity to gather here today, the freedom to meet. God, I pray you'll be with these leaders, the council, today in the decisions and choices they'll need to make, that you'll provide them the wisdom and knowledge they need in doing their job. God, we just thank you for this city. And God, we just pray that we'll continue to be that city on the hill where we're an example to those around us of how we're following you and your will, how we love each other, we treat each other with respect. And we promise to give you the praise and glory in the end in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We will have Chief Reed to come and do our update on COVID-19.
For the first time, I say good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I will be giving the EMA and the fire department's report today. The EMA regrets that they cannot be here, they have other obligations today. So, 52,243 persons in Edgewall County have received at least one COVID-19 vaccination thus far. 43,945,000 have completed the shots. Edgewall County currently sits at a 25.3% positivity rate, which is way down.
Yes.
Not where we want it to be, but it's way down. Total number of cases for our county, 28,408. Let's see here. For this year, we've had 7,314 cases. Death toll so far from the entire pandemic is 563. Thirty-two deaths have occurred this year. In the last seven days, there's only been 157 positive tests. It's an average of about 100, average of about 24 cases per day, so that's way down from where we were. So, from the fire department's standpoint, we made six PUI calls in the last seven days. That's huge for us, that's a low number. We have no one out with COVID. The calls that we're seeing are much less acuity than we've seen the entire time. Both hospitals, while still near or at capacity, their numbers are tremendously lower than they were. But, so, we're going to take this time while we're in a lull, and hopefully, we'll stay in a lull, but who knows? We've seen four spikes so far. We're going to prepare for the possibility of a next wave. The fire department has begun our training and inspections back that we have not been able to do during the COVID pandemic. And let's please not forget that there's other things going on other than COVID. We're still fighting fires, EMS calls, we have a mental health crisis, and a opioid pandemic going on. So, there's still a lot of other things other than COVID facing our city, but things are looking up.
Any questions? Do you all work with, what is it, Scott, is it Hassle?
Yes, ma'am. I met with Judge Hassle last week. We are working, I will be calling him soon to set up another meeting. There was a couple of snags, not his fault, not our fault, that are going to have to be overcome before we start our mental health program here at the fire department. But we are working with Judge Hassle.
Have you been able to get some of your medics back?
As far as hiring medics?
Hiring medics, and I think we had a couple that was out, not from COVID anything.
Oh, oh, yes, sir. No, we're not able to hire any paramedics. I do have one paramedic that returned today from a long-term illness with his son, so thank you all for your prayers for him. He did return today. I have another paramedic, I received bad news today that he will probably not be returning to the fire department due to illness. And we do have paramedics in school, but that's a long-term solution. That'll be May of next year before I see any fruition with that.
Madam President, point of privilege, just to save me from having to get long-winded at the end in my personal comments, I just want to clarify a couple of things to the general public concerning the fire department. There was some misinformation out there about the new fire hall that was being built in the Banks Park area. Just to clarify, it was a little misleading because what, the story that had circulated on social media was that the city didn't spend any money to build that fire hall, and that ARP funds were used there. And that, that is technically correct, but I just want to make it clear to the public, we had absolutely planned to build that fire hall and had approved city funding to build that fire hall before ARP funds were ever available. Now, once the ARP funds became available, we did go back and repurpose some of those funds, but the statement that we weren't going to do, build that fire hall until ARP funding came along is inaccurate. We had already approved the funding in the budget to build that. And another thing I'll say, I've had personal conversations with the Personnel Director and the Fire Chief about plans to evaluate firefighter pay and potentially restructure the entire, very complex method in which we compensate our firefighters, and it's my understanding that those conversations will start in earnest sometime in May, if I'm correct.
Yes, sir, that is correct. And thank you. From a fire chief's point of view, I didn't care where the money come from, thank y'all for building the fire station.
Absolutely.
And thank you all for working with us to fix the firefighter pay issue.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. We will now continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special call meeting that was held on February the 1st, and the Educational Recreational Committee Work Session and City Council Meeting that was held on February the 8th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of February the 4th through February the 10th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of accounts.
Proclaimations. We will now move to unfinished business. We have an ordinance amending the City Code, Section 6-45 regarding applications for the alcoholic beverage license. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading, and it would require that the criminal background report provided by the applicants be no more than six months old, and it also deletes wording regarding criminal investigation concerning the administrative review process. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 253 Tabor Road in District 7, of William Elf and Mary E. Rollins being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor? Okay.
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. I'm sorry, was someone here to speak in opposition?
No, no, he was speaking in favor.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to tell the madam that there were several of the neighbors that wanted to come today, and, and so, if you allow me, I'll just lay out the brief history of this case. We filed it in September of 2021. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and as you can see in the pictures, this property was basically used to harbor animals for years. The conditions inside the house are beyond deplorable, some of the worst I've seen, and I've been doing this 30 years. So, I will, I will ask that the neighbors come who have lived next to this and behind this for, for years, so I'll yield my time to them.
If you'll come and just give your name and, and address.
One of these days, we're going to get a video of the monitor, we could show it.
I do agree.
Can we get a new city hall?
So are you designing it now? Aye.
I'd be happy to initiate that.
I'm sorry, go ahead, give your name.
Good afternoon, I'm Steve Daniel. I live at 154 Dorch Drive. I live, my property is adjoining this property. When the wind blows from the north, it blows straight into our house. It is a stench. I have brought along a few pictures that my wife took the day before yesterday, so these are about as current as you're going to get. It shows that the place is a jungle. Vines, Tarson has nothing on this place. The backyard is atrocious. When she was forced to cut her grice last year, she rebelled. I think she thought I was the one that called, so she cut all the way down till she got about 30 or 40 foot from our property line, and she let the grice grow up waist-high. It's still that way. Nothing has happened. She has ignored the condemned signs that the city has put up on her property. This property, she spends the night there every night. Her water had been cut off, so they went around it, it, the water meter. Her power was cut off, they went around that. So then they cut the lines so that no one could use them. She put up a temporary service pole out there and has two extension cords going in her house to run a TV and a heater. Just every way possible to get around the City of Gaston, she's done it, and nothing has happened to her. It's not that she can't, it's that she won't. The problem is, is she's a secretary, she works for a lawyer. That means nothing to me. You can tell I'm a quiet and shy type. So here's the answer. The City of Gaston, we want some relief. Myself, our neighbors that live right, there's just two families that live right there close to it, plus there's another family on the other side of me that lady just gave birth. They can't be here today. But these are the people that are affected. It is a tough thing. I have these pictures, if y'all would like to have a look at them.
Sir, did you say the occupant works?
What, ma'am?
Did you say that this lady works?
Yes, ma'am, she works for a local lawyer.
Mr. Harbison, if the house is, is torn down, do you all make sure that she's not in there?
Or vice versa?
No, I won't, I won't, I won't do that in public.
But that's our play, though, is that we want all the help we can get from the city. We have had animal controls been out there, nuisance and abatement's been out there, the fire department's been out there. This last summer, there was such a stench, we were afraid she was dead inside her house, but she wasn't. But they had to force entry, and they had to wade through stuff that was piled up in the house, buttered and shoulder-high on me, and I'm 6'3". So let's say that it's bad. One of the gentlemen from the animal control came out, and he had feces all over his shoe, and he was sitting out there talking to me, and he says, "This is awful." And, oh, I forgot to mention, the lady had, did have 27 cats in her house, I don't know how many she has now. But I says, "Cats don't use toilet paper." It was that bad. This is something that shouldn't happen even out in the county, let alone in the city. That was primarily my objection, was I wanted to have a chance to show what we live next door to, and what Steve Goble lives beside. These people are, it's more than you can stand. Last year, she cut her grice when the city forced her to, but not since then.
Madam President, for the sake of all parties involved, can we just move ahead and make a motion to abate this nuisance?
Oh, yes.
Well, some of these folks have waited a long time.
Oh, okay, I thought he was the only one that raised his hand to speak. I didn't, I just, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I didn't see you raise your hand to speak, sir. That's, that's the reason I said that, go ahead.
Yeah.
Well, this has been a problem since 2017. This lady's mother passed away, and she continued to live there. I think all the bills and everything else was in mama's name, but as things came up and nothing was paid, eventually, things got cut off. There's one picture in there that's, shows a small white compact car with garbage bags hanging on the side of it. She traded that car this last year. I followed her down Megan, she turned it on Phil Street to go put them in a dumpster, one way around the garbage bill. It's atrocious. I appreciate your time, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Next neighbor?
Hey.
If you give your name and address, please.
My name is Steve Grogan. I live at 249 Tabor Road. And me and my wife, we lived most of our life in Cherokee County, so we decided to buy, purchase a house down here in Edgewall County, you know, and up on Tabor Road, Knockloula Falls, supposed to be a pretty reputable neighborhood, you know. But the little that I know, we was moving in next door to the house from hell. And I have, in 2016, when we moved in, and I have pictures on my phone, and I couldn't get none made this morning. But anyway, I got rats climbing the wall, and, and all kind of rats coming, you know, we've had rats and roaches just out the wazoo from her house to our house, because our property joins. So I went and bought tractor supply and got some varmit traps, and went to catching the rats, you know, and then I'd shoot them and throw them in the trash. Well, when she heard about that, she got mad, and then when I'd catch them, you know, catch them, release trap, well, she would sneak up in the mornings before I got up and take the traps with her to her job and release them out on 431 at a bakery store out there. She would rehome them. And I, I showed pictures, you know, the, the dog food bowl that the dog eats out of, you know, there's like 50 rats going to it, you know, constantly. Anyway, she started naming them. She'd sit there in the yard and call them names.
I know you can't make this up.
No. And me and my son, we built a deck on the back of our house, not just past summer, summer before, and like Steve said, when the wind blows from the right direction, he threw up twice while we were building that porch, the stink was bad. But if you want to watch the video, I got it on my phone all the time.
No, sir, we've seen enough.
And I didn't know them little fellers could climb a wall like they do. But in...
You're talking about a story out of a Disney movie.
And the, right there on the corner of her house, you know, at the back, the eve of the house is rotten, so there's a big old opening there. And just the other night, I caught a picture of a possum going in there. So, you know, and my two little dogs can't even go out in the backyard for the possums and the rats and stuff like that, and I took our dogs to the vet so many times, and he'd say, "Well, where is she getting this infection from?" It'd be on her side, on the same side, all the time. And it come to find out, she was rubbing that fence over there, it joint, you know, where her dog rubbed the fence, and it would get on my dog. So, and we've been there since, well, we've been trying to get something done for several years, and, you know, anything, couple of sticks of dynamite, anything. You know, something, please.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else want to speak? What, what else can we say? What is the pledge? Yes, yes, ma'am.
My little wife. Boy, I brought a big gun.
Just tell us what your name.
I'm Sally Grogan. I live at 243 Tabor Road. I'm at 249. There's a dog in the backyard. I have pictures on my phone, but you're welcome to see it. These dogs, she has one in the house with all the cats. It is pitiful. Its skin is rotten. They need help. They'd be better off not living, to live like they do. And I'm an animal lover. I've been trying to get help for this since 2017. And I get aggravated about the dogs. But them dogs, like today, Greg Peir, he has a big thick sweater on to cover up his skin where y'all don't see it, where nobody sees it, and then a coat on top of that. Greg Peir's have two types of hair. He don't need that on him. But them animals, they need help, please. And we can't, we can't enjoy our home for that. That lady's a nutcase. When they came out the last time, she knew they were coming, we can always tell when they're coming, when anyone's coming out. She'll act like she's cleaning. She put every one of the cats in her car and backed it into the front yard where nobody would see it. When they left, she brought them cats out and put them back in that house. She's not rehoming them, she's not taking care of them. She had her bathtub filled with cat litter. And it, it's awful. I mean, something, whatever y'all can do, it needs done now. You know, she needs some help. She's a mental case to live in that mess. But we don't deserve to live in it. Something needs done about it. Nobody wants that mess. And I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? What is the pleasure, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Can we expedite it?
I was about to say that. Can we speed up on this one?
Put it at the front of the line.
Was there anything on camera?
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Thank you for being a good boss to me.
All right.
He's responsible.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving and issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. This is Heavenly Blessings LLC, doing business as Barney Roadhouse, located at 4405 Journey Place in District 6, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving and issuance of a alcoholic beverage license, this Tonus Italian Specialty LLC, doing business as Trera Gazze's Italian Cafe, located at 1001 Rainbow Drive, Suite D in District 4, has applied for a retail beer and table wine license on or off premises. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Another, another resolution authorizing agreement with the Love Center. This authorized a partnership with the Love Center for the expenditures of the coronavirus state and local recovery fund in the amount of $50,000 to be used for providing meal assistance and other services to respond to the negative impact of COVID-19. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in, those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Metropolitan Area Noon Nutrition Association, which is known as MANA. This operate, authorizes a partnership with MANA for the expenditures of coronavirus state and local recovery funds in the amount of $50,000 to be used for providing meals, assistance, or other services to respond to the negative impact of the COVID-19. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? We have none. Our citizen request is not present. We have two department, two department reports. Mr. Payne?
I won't take as long as I was, because Jason kind of stole some of my thunder. Me and him must be looking at the same social media pages. But anyway, the, he's correct, the fire station was in our general fund budget, then when we got the ARP money, we shifted it, and the reason we shifted it, which he didn't say, was it was able to allow us to provide some raises and some premium pay for some employees that were not under the ARP guidelines. So that was one reason that we, that we did that, but he's exactly correct, it was in the general fund. It wasn't something, it would have been done even if we have not gotten the money, but it allowed us to do some other things. The, I just want to let everybody know, we have job openings, not in just the police and fire, but we, we do have them there. We've got them in parts and wreck, we've got them in, we need mechanics in fleet, we need workers in public works. We're interviewing guys or people this Friday and Monday for a position, so we are in the, the hiring business. I want to kind of clear up a few things that Mr. Cole had commented on, on pay, that's, and some of the other things that he had stated, that's not exactly the way he stated. He had mentioned, the thing that he pointed out, I think, last time he spoke, was wanting the mayor to give a $5,000 bonus to the police department. He had forgot that one of his suggestions to us before we ever started planning the budget was to do an incentive, and we did it. We've got one right now, it's $3,000 for each police officer that we hire, the next 10 police officers. We've hired five. They get $1,000 when they're hired, they get $1,000 after the first year, and $1,000 after the second. And that was something that he had recommended, and he seemed to have forgot that, but I reminded him of it, and he kind of chuckled, so he is aware of that now. The, I've got, I'm just going to read you some numbers of W2s, I have no names, this is W2s in the fire department for this past year. And I'm just going to call out numbers here at random, going down the list, and this is the total yearly pay for these, whoever the individuals are. $49,000, $53,000, $47,000, $42,000, $84,000, 67, 64, 77, 42, 104, 47, 53, 67, 57, 49, 65, 52, 65, 38, 84, 90, 39, 77, 41, 39. And that's just a few of, of the people on this list, or the individuals on this list that I've got, I've got them all. But the average pay for our firemen on, last year, was $57,000 and some odd dollars, which is very comparable to firemen's salaries in these other cities. Now, are they probably working more? That's very possible. And that's why we're going to have the meeting that we've committed to have in the next 60 days, is when we're going to try to have it with the fire department. Mr. Wilson has committed to sit in with us as well, and we're going to try to look at their pay structure, because are they working too many hours? They probably are to receive this funding based on the, the number of employees that we have. I think they're seven short now. I talk to the chief pretty regular, and we've got a couple of firemen that have been here before that have left, and they're looking at possibly coming back. We don't know if that'll happen or not, that's just rumors out there, and them calling, checking into it to see if they can come back. You've got requirements, according to Civil Service Board. The most important thing is... The most important thing is ribbon cutting. We're having a ribbon cutting March the 1st, 1:30 at East Gaston Community Center. We'll be getting more information out. Michael Rogers will get a, something put out for everyone and get folks notified. But we hope you'll come out. It's been way, way overdue. It seems like it started when I first started work. That's how long ago it's been, and that's been a long time. So we invite everybody to come out and see the facility. We'll make time for the council to briefly speak. Each one of you want to speak, and anybody else that wants to talk about the facility on that day at 1:30. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
What is the starting pay per hour for a fireman?
Well, they say 10, 30 something, an hours base pay. But the firemen and the policemen, of course, they get uniform allowance, they get...
I, I understand that.
The firemen...
I understand it.
Okay.
I wanted to know, what is the starting pay for starting firefighter?
Okay.
A rookie firefighter? Not with the incentives?
Right.
Not with longevity, because they're not going to have longevity pay anywhere.
That's correct. It's probably somewhere in the $13 an hour range on the starting pay.
Well, you, why you cannot tell us? Why, you should know, you're the personnel director.
I understand that. That's what I'm saying. With the, see, they have built in, let me explain this to you. They have built in overtime in the fire department and police department. It's built into the reg, it's built into the regular schedule. So that's why, if, if people think that we've got firemen out here that are making $20,000, $25,000 a year base pay to work, that's not the case. When you, when you factor in the overtime that's built into their schedule and all, it comes out, and I said, I hadn't figured it out based on the formula that you have to use, because it's complicated. And, but it's probably, it's probably somewhere around 13, 14, maybe on base pay.
At the next council meeting, could you give a report and tell us exactly what a fireman makes?
I'll do my best.
Because I know we've got a fireman that's got a pay stub that says he makes $10.36 an hour. Okay? And it's disingenuous for you to stand up there and give all those numbers, like $90,000. Okay, that, that fireman worked, he's $8,000 and some hours in a year. He worked $4,000 and some hours at the fire department. He worked half of the year. He was num, he was 38 most of that time, which is this assistant chief for that shift. And he's away from his family. That's why he made the $90,000. And I try to tell the council, and anybody that will listen, when a fireman work overtime, that's 24 hours.
That's right.
So of course he's going to make more money.
I understand.
But you have firemen now that don't want to work overtime.
I understand, and that's why...
Just like we have police officers now that don't want to work overtime. See, when I was working, we worked everything. See, because we had families. And we worked several off duty jobs, plus all the overtime you can get, because that's how you made ends meet. But now these younger guys, they don't care nothing about that. They just want to work their shift and go on home. So that's why you have the older guys that work it all the time. But they're away from their family.
I agree with you 100%.
They don't want to be there.
That's why we got to look at restructuring. I agree with you 100%.
Madam President.
When you, when you did those numbers, you, you also should have put down the number of hours they worked to make that. And that would give you a true picture of what's going on.
I can do that for you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Madam President, if I could just add a little bit of clarity, I think, and I hope I don't misspeak here, but when, when Mr. Payne talks about guaranteed overtime, I think it's 400 hours a year in guaranteed overtime.
They work 56 hours a week.
Again, I just want to provide some clarification. When we talk about guaranteed 400 hours of overtime, they get paid time and a half for that 400 hours. So it's not, even if their base pay is 10, 36, time and a half would be $15.50 something cents. So if you add that $15.50 something cents in with the $10.36 base pay, and then divide it all by total number of hours of work, you're going to get to that $12, $13 number that he was describing. So I think that's the clarification as far as the discrepancy between 10 and 13, is it includes that, those 400 hours that they're getting paid 15 something, averaged out with hours, they're getting paid 10, divided over the total number of hours they're guaranteed to work. And again, as I've said a million times, I agree we need to pay our firefighters more money, and I'm excited that we've finally gotten to a point that we had never been at, where this administration and the fire chief and members of this council have agreed to sit down and actually dig in to what is a very, very, very complex employment agreement with firefighters. I mean, I consider myself pretty financially savvy, being an employer for many years, and I can tell you that this is one of the most complex employment agreements I've ever seen. Firefighters get additional pay for rope training if they are qualified for rescue, if they're an EMT, if they drive a truck, they get additional pay. I mean, there's so many different moving parts to this thing. It's no wonder that we, on the surface, don't look like we're taking care of these firefighters, because, and this thing was in place well before anybody even on this council was sitting in their seats. I mean, it's been in place a long time, and I'm very excited that we're finally, finally have a group that's committed to sit down and not point fingers at each other and actually try to start from scratch and figure out how to make this thing work a lot smoother, including going from a 50-step raise pay structure down to a 25, like most firefighters do. And I mean, we've been in contact with the firefighters union representatives. I mean, there's genuine progress here, and I hope it, it keeps going, because I think we can get somewhere good and get to, get there pretty quick.
May I ask the chief a question? Fire chief, would you come up, please?
Yes, sir.
Tell us how many hours a fireman works in a week before he can get overtime pay.
Well, it, it varies. I mean, you, you average at a 56-hour week. One week you work 48, the next week you work 48, the next week you work 72. That comes to an average of 56.
So how much is that per hour for a starting firefighter?
For a starting firefighter walking in the door.
Yes, sir, walking in the door.
Yes, 10, 10, 38 an hour for a starting firefighter.
Uncertified.
Uncertified, walking in the door.
They get a two-step raise if they're certified firefighters.
I understand that. And all those incentives for the rope training and, uh...
We do not, we do not get incentives for rope training.
But it's different things that they do.
You get two...
Because you got to have those people for like boat rescue.
Right.
The divers.
Yeah.
And they should get paid. I couldn't agree more.
Our incentives, we get, we get 2% to be any EMT basic. You get 5% to be an intermediate or an advanced EMT, and you get 10% to be a paramedic. And those do not compound. That's 2, 5, and 10 you get for being that.
Absolutely.
And the, if I'm understanding right, if I'm speaking out of turn, one of y'all that's been here a lot longer than me, let me know. The built-in overtime, that's the Fair Labor Standard Act, that they have to pay them for working so much. If they take a sick day off during that, they don't get that, so that's not guaranteed.
Right.
Well, and I want to make it clear, in no way should anything I said up here be misconstrued as, as questioning the need to pay our firefighters more money at all. All I was trying to make the point of is, if you've ever actually sat down and looked at this employment agreement, it is an absolute spider web of different compensation levels and different packages, and how they're paid, and what, when they get their 2%, and their 5%, and when they come in, it's uncertified, and then they go to certified. Is there a pay, is there not? Who, who authorized this incentive, this recruitment incentive? It is an absolute spider web, and it is hard for even somebody who has studied labor and employed people for the better part of a decade and a half. It's even hard for me to understand it. So I'm excited to get back down to the drawing board and try to simplify this thing so that we can actually post a fair wage that's competitive with local firefighters.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Can I say one other thing before we go back to my seat? That, that's the whole thing of this meeting. We want to pay them, we want them working less. They don't need to be working all these hours. I agree with you 100%. And that was why we need to restructure this for safety reasons as well. I know the police department met, may be back with Shane when he was here, and they did some things, and I think it probably helped some. Of course, now they're needing some adjustments as well. But we, we're going to look at adjusting everybody, police, fire, and all departments to some degree, but they're two of our most important departments, and they need to be paid for what they do. And we need to have them working less.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Because according to the finance director throughout the city, overtime is, is out the wazoo. And overtime, overtime, and overtime, you know, you got to look at, do you care about the city? Do you want it, do you want it to go under trying to finance? And I, and I'm, hey, I'm, I'm number one supporter of police and fire. I'm number one supporter of it. But I'm saying, and I'm not talking about just them, but across this whole city, overtime is out the wazoo.
Well, and it's a catch 22, Madam President, because what happens is, we don't, we, we can't afford to pay our starting pay, we can't afford to raise our starting pay, which means the employees that we do have have to work more overtime. And when our employees work more overtime, we use that as justification for not giving them better starting pay. But if we could give them better starting pay, we wouldn't have to pay so much overtime. So something's got to give here, you know?
But right now, it's no choice but to work overtime because they're so short. If you're 20 police officers short, you got to fill that gap so they got to work.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we should have a job...
And so when you've got seven firemen that's, uh, that's short, they got to work.
Well, maybe we should have a job fair for the police and the fire department, just a job fair.
Anything, but listen, this is just not in Gaston. It's in, uh, Clearer. It's all over the United States. It was, they were on, Clearer was on TV, uh, I watched the news the other night, and they short. So they have to prioritize their cause. You know, these regular, and I tell you another thing we need to do with the police department that'll give them some relief. We need to hire some civilians to take the reports. Like the simple reports, and that would save them time for standing there taking a report on trespassing or anything of that nature. Now, any major stuff, the police need to do the report.
That's, that's another story. We have a, Mr. Heath, and I don't know if we should just wait till, uh, uh, next time. Why don't we just wait till, uh, next time? And we can get the, we'll start with you first in getting our, uh, other projects in. That's been a big hit. The projects that were presented before, they're being, they're being talked about. And again, I want to say that those projects have been in the making for a long time. You know, we have some people who would like to say that they're only being done because of, uh, it's an election year, but these have been in the making for a while, and we're just happy for it. So we're gonna, we're gonna save Mr. Williamson for next council meeting. And maybe we won't have three in one at this time. Should I just hit the gavel and ask the...
No, ma'am, I have a couple things to say.
I was about to hit the gavel and say, uh, well, uh...
One thing, but a minute. You ready for me?
Timing.
First, I want to say, congratulations to Ashton Gray. He put on one heck of a Black History program at the Vineyard Sunday on a job well done, loving the culture, a Black Expo, and Culture Fest. It was wonderful. They had concerts, they had, Dottie Peoples was here to sing. So it was just, it was a good day all around. The food was great. You know, I had to eat, so. We, I got in touch, I sent the email to the city about the park. I've been getting all the complaints at the park on Joseph T. Robertson, right there, Joseph T. Robertson and Tuscaloosa Avenue, right next to Drake School. Found out the board education on the property. So I got in touch with Mr. Reddick. Somebody ran through the fence and hit the swing set and messed it up. So I met with Mr. Blackwell and the maintenance guy yesterday down there. So we looking at it, trying to get it fixed. I can use some of my discretionary money. Or we could use some federal block grant money for community parks. And it needed new equipment. It's, it's awful. But anyway, while I was there, there was a guy walked up, wanted to know what we was doing. And, uh, he, he was being smart with me at first. And, and he said, "Well, you got a grant for the police department to come down here and harass us." I said, "What are you talking about?" He said, "Well, that's what the word is, that you, you, you got a grant, and you, you got the police coming down here and they harassing us." I said, "Well, number one, no one has called me and said anything about somebody harassing them." I said, "Number two, there's no way I could get a grant for that." You know? So then when I told him that, his attitude changed. And he started with saying, "Well, you all are, all y'all doing is knocking down houses in our community. You need to fix them up." So then I explained to him my nonprofit that we started before I ran, that we Gaston Empowerment Initiative, where we go in and fix up the elderly and disabled homes. And I told him, I said, "Did you know that I, I do that?" He said, "No, I didn't know that." I said, "We have completed 33 projects in eight years, almost eight years." So then he said, "Well, you know, I'm a carpenter, uh, I would like to help." I said, "Well, I'll get you in touch with the contractor that works for us." And I text him, and he knew him. So he, I gave him his information so he was going to work with us. But people, it's election year, and the dirt of politics is going to continue. Just like I had a police officer come up to me a minute ago and said that they're saying that, uh, "I don't want to get a police officer's a raise." And I said, "What?" And I thought he was joking at first, but he, the lieutenant was serious. And I said, "There's no, that don't even make sense. All you got to do is watch the council meeting. But it's dirty politics. The election is coming up, so people going to put up, that's how they do. And that's what I want to take out of, I want to take the dirt out of politics in Gaston." That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman Bass.
I, real quick, just want to agree with all that's been said up here about the firemen and the police. Commend Councilman Wilson and Finance Department, Mayor's Office for meeting with the fire department. If Ms. Rossell will remember, my first year on the council, I went and met with Chief Carroll, and I came and met with you because, much like Councilman Wilson, I could not understand how a fireman is paid. And I've, Jason's got one decade into doing that, I've got close to four. And so I couldn't figure it out either. And so it's just real complex. So I, I think all of us sitting up here wants very much to pay our police and fire as much as we can possibly pay them. I don't think there's any, I've seen no reluctance on any kind of a pay increase or any kind of a discussion when it ever comes up. I think it's wise for us to have this meeting to really drill down into the structure, to make it a little more understandable, and so it, it can probably work a lot better once that is, once that's, that's done. Councilman Worthy mentioned how other police, cities are having the same problem. He's exactly right. That's why we lose our first responders to other cities. It's not like they're, it's not like they don't need any employees. They need employees just like we do, and they're paying apparently, or possibly more than we're paying, and so people have left. So we have to respond to that. I mentioned that last week about our public, I mean, our Parks and Rec Department. We're having trouble finding people to work there. We're going to have to respond to the job market. It's such a fast-changing world. Even in the last three years, things are not done the same way when I first got on this council, not only in our city but in our country. So we have to be responsive. We, we have to have our head on a swivel, so to speak, and we've got to react just as much as we can. But keep in mind, there's only so much money that the city takes in. And so we, we have to decide how we're going to spend that money, just like we, you do at your house. You, you, you have so much money that you can spend, and you have to decide, "How am I going to spend that money?" And that's what we're charged with, I believe, as city leaders, is how do we spend the money that, that, that we have? And when you give, when you have certain expenditures, it's not just for that 12 months, it's for the next, oh gosh, decade or two decades. So you have to be real careful and smart when you make your choices because you're going to encumber the city for that expense from this point forward. And you have to take into account how much money are we going to have annually five years from now? It's kind of hard to know. You just do the best you can and, and Ms. Rossell and Mayor Guyton and his office have done a pretty good job. All you got to do is look at our balance sheet. It's in excellent condition because of choices that have, that have been made by previous councils. And so it's just, it's trying times. We, we all need to, I think, step back, take a breath and do what is being done, which is meet at a table and sit down and just put everything out there and look at it and, and make the best decision for the taxpayers of the city of Gadsden. So I look forward to those meetings and hope I can be a, a part of those. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be brief. I just want to say good afternoon to everybody except for the Arkansas Razorbacks Men's Basketball Team. And, and I want to say a special thank you to the members of Heavenly Blessings LLC. These guys are doing business, Barney's Roadhouse. Y'all have noticed, we just approved their alcohol license, but y'all may not know the backstory on that. They had fallen behind on their city sales tax payments a couple of years ago and it was a pretty substantial amount of money. And we made an agreement with them where if they would make regular payments to catch those back taxes up, in addition to making their sales tax payments that they were incurring as they continued to operate, that we would approve their alcohol license. And so they held up their end of the bargain. They made every single payment they were supposed to over the last two years. They got the account current. And so we've made good on our agreement with them and approved that alcohol license today. So I just want to say thank, thank you to all the members of that LLC for doing what you said you were going to do. That doesn't happen very often around here. Thanks.
All right. I call for a motion to adjourn.